Hi, it is legion, the flag of the United States of America. To the report which stands for one nation under God.
Thank you. Announcements, any?
I have one.
We have one.
Um, I wanted to announce that Pamela Coward, our Director of Senior Services, has started an initiative inviting our senior community members to share their reflections and life lessons with our teenagers in town as they prepare for life after high school. These messages are being collected at the community center, the Brownell Library and Town Hall, and will be compiled into a booklet to be presented to the graduates when they have their traditional walk through the halls of Wilbur McMahon School in June.
That's great. I think that's wonderful. My kids were in Wilbur when the high schoolers walked through, and they were high schoolers and get to walk through. So I think it's great that we're sharing it with just some business. We had an executive session, like to say no votes were taken in executive session, and I will take a motion for a vote to seal the minutes.
They moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Department head reports, this is my fault. The finance director is not here. He's out of state. I put this on there. That's my fault. I'm sorry he's not here. That report will come on our next meeting on 11/6. Sorry, but if anyone came for that, that was my fault. All business, one review composting program.
You didn't approve the minutes.
Oh, I should approve the minutes of the ninth, 2025, unless there's any corrections to them.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you, Heather. All business, one review composting program as continued from June 30, 2025. Do we have any comments on that? I don't see any comments on that today.
Um, is the cost of the town more money than if we sent it up to recovery station the right way? We renegotiate the contract with Black Earth Compost.
What I have, Gary, is the total cost to haul is $2,259.40. And the yearly cost of the program, it's current rate, that's 344 monthly is $4,028. So it's costing the town $1,868. So if you're asking one person here, um, we can certainly, you know, we don't want, you know, we do programs and we have to fund those programs. We can't just take them out of the general fund, right? We got to fund them. You know, I would suggest a surcharge of a dollar. We have 2,220 dump stickers this year, uh, and we charge $5 and we'll keep the $5. Maybe there's a surcharge for a dollar to pay for this program. That would be an option that I think would be appropriate. I don't know if we want to vote on that now or consider it, but just some discussion.
Well, I think if we, somebody talks with Black Earth Compost and that we won't say we just want to, we want to continue the program, but I think they're getting more compost from us than what they expected. I think that's why the, there's an overage on it. So just if they could do something, maybe just give them a phone call.
Yeah, we had your mic on.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You need it closer to you, Gary.
Gary, I'm not Black Earth, but the Black Earth, Black, what's it called?
Black Earth Compost.
Oh, aficionado, so I don't know. I don't know if anyone here.
Suppose we task the, uh, Director of Public Works to initiate that negotiation.
You want to make a motion or you've just tasked?
That seem reasonable.
Sure.
Yeah. I move then that we task the Director of Public Works to enter in a negotiation with Black Earth Compost to see if we can, to determine if we can be charged less.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All business, two, follow up a draft proposal from the homestead exemption ad hoc committee. I will go to the solicitor. Have you reviewed these words?
I have, yes.
And how did it go? How did the review go?
Oh, the question. Can you hear me now? The, um, proposals that you have here, in my opinion, um, this will be probably the most complicated homestead exemption in the state. What's typically done matters of this nature, that there are specific sections for each town that has a homestead exemption in Title 44, Chapter 5. So can this be drafted? Yes. Will it be lawful? Yes. Um, I, I think what needs to be done here is, is two things, and you'd need to get it before your second meeting in December. And that is that you have a resolution that would be sent to the General Assembly and your legislative delegation, asking the General Assembly to amend Title 44, Chapter 5 to include a homestead exemption for the town of Little Compton. And I also suggest that the proposed legislation be appended to the resolution. That will be the more important thing on drafting. There's several elements to this homestead exemption. So if you refer this to me for the drafting of an appropriate resolution in an appropriate, um, form, uh, bill to append to it, I would also like you to include in that referral that I can work with this group to make sure that it, the language adheres to what they're, they're looking for.
Gary, you were on that committee. You want to add anything?
Um, yeah, we spent quite a bit of time on this. There are some appendixes that I was going to give to the solicitor to look at. Um, what we're trying to do is keep people in town for, if they rent properties, get the landlords to get people in there for 12 months a year instead of short-term rentals and give them a, this homestead exemption on their own house plus the rental house. So I just want to give this to the solicitor. I think it's a good idea if he sat in with us for a meeting. We can have a meeting next week, your availability, Tony, and go over it face to face and give you the gist of what we're looking at.
Okay, I'll have to make that motion.
I will.
Go ahead.
I move that we refer this to the solicitor to work with the committee to draft appropriate resolution in legislative language.
Second.
Discussion.
And I, can I add to that in discussion? I just want to thank the committee. I, I'm really happy about this. I think it's excellent. It's a really thoughtful and careful proposal, so I appreciate everybody's time on it. I think it's a great way to put some money back in the pockets of our year-round residents and by extending the exemption to property owners who provide year-round rentals, as Gary said, we're also incentivizing some more much-needed long-term rentals in town. So thank you, everybody, for working on it.
One other comment, we need to realize that this puts an extra, not extraordinary, an extra burden on the assessor's office. As a follow-on, not as part of this motion, but as a follow-on, we need to keep in mind that we need a, an ordinance that invokes eventually the principles of the legislation and that it provides for how we're going to do that so that we don't simply say, good, that's solved, the assessor will do it. In other words, there's a great deal of weighing of options that are going to exist, people that apply rightfully to be considered. All of those things are going to need staffing, so that, that needs to be part of what we end up with.
So the tax assessor has been involved with this and she's on board with this. She seems to think it's a good idea, so.
Oh, I don't, I'm not suggesting the committee is divided. I'm saying if the committee, if we are successful, and I endorse the idea certainly, but if we are successful, we're going to put a burden on the assessor's office that we historically have done with things where we say, the assessor should do this, but we don't necessarily give her the tools with which to do that. It may be staff, it may be hired folks. My only point is to remember when the time comes and we declare victory and we have in hand legislation and an ordinance that, that says this is what we're going to do, that then we have to make it happen.
And, and am I right in understanding that process-wise here, it goes to be drafted, it goes to our state legislators, it gets on to their calendar starting in January for the next session, and hopefully we get that approved at the state level in time for us to vote on it as a community at our financial town meeting?
Yeah, you're on a tight.
For the ordinance, like that's the process.
You're, you're on a tight time schedule.
Yeah.
And you really need to get this through the General Assembly, in my opinion, by March.
Yeah.
So it can be dealt with by the voters at the financial town meeting with sufficient notice. Bob is correct. You're going to have to have an ordinance which will deal with the how.
Yeah.
How you are going to implement the, uh, the homestead exemption. So there's a lot of work to do and there's really not a lot of time to do it.
I, I think I understand from, on the how point that, and, and somebody can correct me if I'm wrong, Gary, if you know, or if someone wants to speak to it, that folks will be automatically eligible for that exemption and will receive that exemption if they're registered voter in town. So in terms of the additional work on behalf of the assessor, there will be work for the other applications when somebody says, oh, I'm a landlord and I also have this property. So there will be some discretion and some work, not to minimize the work on that office, but to say that it won't be every single application has to be handled.
Agreed.
Okay.
I understand.
Okay.
No, most of it's going to be automatic and Denise is willing to do that, but there are going to be some paperwork that has to be put forward by the renters to show that this person's renting.
Business, we had an executive session, like to say no votes were taken in executive session, and I will take a motion for a vote to seal the minutes.
I moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Department head reports, this is my fault, the finance director is not here, he's out of state. I put this on there, that's my fault, I'm sorry it's not here. That report will come on our next meeting on eleven six. Sorry Bob, if anyone came for that, that was my fault. All business one, review composting program.
You didn't approve the minutes.
Motion approved, minutes of chapter nine, twenty twenty five, unless there's any corrections to them.
All in favor?
Aye.
Right, thank you Heather. All business one, review composting program as continued from June thirty, twenty twenty five. Do we have any comments on that? I don't see any comments on that today.
Um. Is the cost of the town more money than if we sent it up to uh recovery station? The right way we renegotiate the contract with Black Earth Compost?
What I have Gary is the total cost to haul is twenty, twenty-two-hundred fifty-nine dollars and forty cents. And the yearly cost of the program, it's current rate, at three forty-four monthly is four thousand one twenty-eight. So it's costing the town one thousand eight hundred and sixty-eight dollars. So if you're asking one person here, um, we can certainly, you know, we don't want, you know, we do programs and we have to fund those programs, we can't just take them out of the general fund, right, we gotta fund them. You know, I would suggest a surcharge of a dollar, we have two thousand two hundred and twenty dump stickers this year. And we charge five dollars, we'll keep the five dollars. Um, maybe there's a surcharge for a dollar to pay for this program. That would be an option that that I think would be appropriate. I don't know if we want to vote on that now or consider it, but just some discussion.
Well, I think if we, somebody talks with Black Earth Compost and that we won't say we just want, we want to continue the program. But I think they're getting more compost from us than what they expected. Think that's why the, there's an overage on it. So just if they could do something, maybe just give them a phone call.
Yeah, we had your mic on.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You need it closer to you Gary.
Gary, I'm not Black Earth, but the Black, what's it called?
Black Earth Compost.
Oh, aficionado, so I don't know. I don't know if anyone here.
Suppose we task the uh, uh, director of public works to initiate that negotiation.
You want to make a motion? Or you've just tasked?
That seem reasonable.
Sure.
Yeah. I move then that we task the uh, director of public works to enter in a negotiation with Black Earth Compost. To see if we can, to determine if we can be charged less for this second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All business two, follow up a draft proposal from the homestead exemption ad hoc committee, I will go to the solicitor, have you reviewed these words?
I have, yes.
And how did it go, how did the review go?
Oh, uh, the question. Can you hear me now? The um, uh, proposals that you have here, in my opinion. Um, this will be probably the most complicated homestead exemption in the state, uh, what's typically done matters of this nature. That there are um, specific sections for each town that has a homestead exemption in title forty-four, chapter five. So can this be drafted? Yes. Will it be lawful? Yes. Um. I, I think what needs to be done here is, is two things, and you'd need to get it uh, before your second meeting in December. And that is, uh, that you have a resolution that would be sent to the general assembly and your legislative delegation. Asking the general assembly to amend uh, title forty-four, chapter five to include a homestead exemption for the town of Little Compton. And I also suggest that uh, the proposed legislation be appended to the resolution. That will be the uh, more important thing on drafting. There's several elements to this homestead exemption, so uh, if you uh, refer this to me for the drafting of an appropriate resolution in an appropriate um, form uh, bill to append to it. I would also like you to include in that referral that I can work with this group to make sure that uh, it, uh, the language adheres to what they're, they're looking for.
Gary, you were on that committee, you want to add anything?
Um, yeah, we've spent quite a bit of time on this. There are some uh, appendixes that I was gonna give to the solicitor to look at. Um, what we're trying to do is keep people in town for, if they rent properties. Get the landlords to, uh, get people in there for twelve months a year instead of short-term rentals. And give them a, this homestead exemption on their own house plus the rental house. So, I just want to give this to the solicitor, I think it's a good idea if he sat in with us for a meeting, we can have a meeting next week, your availability Tony. And uh, go over it face to face and give you the gist of what we're looking at.
Okay, I'll have to make that motion.
I will.
Um, go ahead.
I move that we refer this to the solicitor to work with the committee to draft appropriate resolution in legislative language.
Second.
Discussion.
And I, can I add to that, um, in discussion, I just want to thank the committee, I, I'm really happy about this, I think it's excellent. Um, it's a really thoughtful and cons- proposal, so I appreciate everybody's time on it. Um, I think it's a great way to put some money back in the pockets of our year-round residents. And by extending the exemption to property owners who provide year-round rentals, as Gary said, we're also incentivizing some more much-needed long-term rentals in town, so thank you everybody for working on it.
One other comment, we need to realize that this puts an extra, not extraordinary, an extra burden on the assessor's office. As a follow-on, not as part of this motion, but as a follow-on, we need to keep in mind that we need a uh, an ordinance that invokes eventually the principles of the legislation and that it provides for how we're gonna do that. So that we don't simply say, good, that's solved, the assessor will do it. In other words, there's a great deal of weighing of options that are going to exist, people that apply rightfully to be considered. All of those things are gonna need staffing, so that, that needs to be part of what we end up with.
So the tax assessor has been involved with this and she's on board with this, she seems to think it's a good idea, so.
Oh, I don't, I'm not suggesting the committee is divided, I'm saying if the committee, if we are successful, and I endorse the idea certainly, but if we are successful, we're going to put a burden on the assessor's office that we historically have done with things where we say, the assessor should do this. But we don't necessarily give her the tools with which to do that. It may be staff, it may be hired folks. My only point is to remember when the time comes and we declare victory and we have in hand legislation and an ordinance that, that says this is what we're gonna do. That, then we have to make it happen.
And, and am I right in understanding that process-wise here, it goes to be drafted, it goes to our state legislators, it gets on to their um, calendar starting in January for the next session? And hopefully we get that approved at the state level in time for us to vote on it as a community at our financial town meeting?
Yeah, you're on a tight.
For the ordinance, like that's the process.
You're, you're on a tight time schedule.
Okay.
And you really need to get this through the general assembly, in my opinion, by March.
Yeah.
So it can be uh, dealt with uh, by the voters at the financial town meeting with sufficient notice. Uh, Bob is correct, you're going to have to have an ordinance which will deal with the how.
Yeah.
How you are going to implement uh, the uh, uh, the homestead exemption. So there's a lot of work to do and there's really not a lot of time to do it.
I, I think I understand from, on the how point that, and, and somebody can correct me if I'm wrong Gary, if you know, or if someone wants to speak to it, um that folks will be automatically um, eligible for that exemption and will receive that exemption if they're registered voter in town. So in terms of the additional work on behalf of the assessor, there will be work for the other um, applications when somebody says, oh, I'm a landlord and I also have this property, so there will be some discretion and some work not to minimize the work on that office, but to say that it won't be every single application has to be handled.
Agreed.
Okay.
I understand.
Okay.
No, most of it's gonna be automatic and Denise is willing to do that, but there are going to be some um paperwork that has to be put forward by the renters to show that this person's renting for twelve months and some paperwork that that renter has mail coming there and stuff like that, so.
Thank you.
I think all that can be worked out with the solicitor.
I have a motion on the floor.
No.
I have a motion on the floor.
Oh.
Do I have a second?
Oh, I think it was seconded.
Right?
Yeah.
We're in discussion, any further discussion?
Excuse me, Bob wanted me to say the moment.
Oh, I didn't know you were talking, sorry.
Um, to refer, to refer?
She does not.
Not.
Sorry.
Refer, refer to the solicitor to work with um, the committee to work together and draft legislation uh, put forward.
So i- if I'm correct, this proposal will be referred to the town solicitor.
Yes.
With the instruction to work with the committee in order to um, draft an appropriate resolution and accompanying legislation.
That's exactly, do you want me to pass it?
Is that correct Heather?
Yes.
Here Heather, it's written right here.
You can pass it down, I got my motion written.
So, I'll be in touch with you tomorrow with the other members to try to set a meeting up for. We were meeting on Mondays at three o'clock, I don't know how that hits you, but.
We might have to use, we might have to use some technology for that one.
You guys can work that out after.
We'd rather have you in the room so we can still get out with you.
Still in discussion here, any other further discussion on this matter? I see a hand right to the microphone.
Jack here, fifty-five Scott White, I was on the area of Jim and Denise and handle what I can do a lot of that number, and we just named. We'll have a couple of handouts in the back, we'll fill out the follow-up. Looks like I'm, looking at my work. Right.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. All business three, report on the town commons needs, that's been committed. First, I'd like to thank this committee. Um, I thanked a few committees that, that I was part of, that put together. Times, people just say thank you, but this was really a, a, a really good committee, did a lot of hard work. And uh, we're not dissolving this one yet. I wanted to thank you for, for that, and those people were Travis Audi, Suzanne DeSalvo, Warren Jagger, Sal Marinoski, Galen Snow, Bill Terry O and Sid Wardell, but thank you for your, your time, I think you had ten meetings. And uh, they were well-attended, so thank you so much. Um, I think this document may be in the back. The charge of this committee was to recommend the next steps for town-owned buildings known as thirty, thirty-two and thirty-four commons in consideration of community use, programming and any related plans for necessary renovations and improvements. Properties in question, thirty's a fire bar, first building or town maintenance facility, whether one you want to choose. Thirty-two is the Oddfellas Hall and thirty-four is Little Compton Community Center. And I will read to you the next steps that this committee came back with, with the council, one is engage a subsurface evaluation of the water septic and other utilities servicing all three buildings to determine their potential impact on renovation, extension or relocation plans. Regarding number thirty-four, determine the willingness of the town, Little Compton Community Center to renegotiate and extend the existing lease with the Little Compton Community Center in support of a capital campaign to fund renovation and expansion of the, of the facility. The existing lease matures in less than seventeen years and is of insufficient duration to attract the needed philanthropic support, philanthro- how do you say that, philanthrop-
Philanthropic.
Philanthropic support. Continue with the town-funded plans to remediate fire codes violations with a fire suppression sprinkler system. Regarding thirty-two, notwithstanding public comment suggesting unwillingness on the part of the IOF to renegotiate the existing agreement, determine the receptivity of the IOF to modify existing agreements in support of comprehensive renovations to the building in support of its potential use to meet some of the needs identified above. It is recommended by this committee that those discussions be led by a member of the town council and include a member of the committee for contin- continuity purposes, can't read today. Absent some modification of the existing agreement, undertake such renovations as required to bring the town into compliance with the agreement. Regarding thirty, relocate the town's maintenance department to a more suitable location and reserve the site to address any remaining unmet needs after the ultimate utilization of number thirty-two is determined. Possibilities for uh, thirty include renovation of the existing structure where it currently resides. Relocation and renovation of the current structure to provide better access to other town-owned property or demolition of the current structure and replace it with a custom-designed facility. So that uh, was, was, uh, was done well by these folks, um, so I thank them. I think the council will, will now take this and decipher and, and move forward with, with these suggestions, so I thank you again for that. Is there any other comment from the council?
I, I think one of the things we have to do uh, with the LCC day is um extend their lease because that's the only way they're gonna get funding to do what they want to do over there, so I think that should be up to the council to do with um I know you've been dealing with them quite often, maybe you might want to talk to them and they got seventeen years left, maybe give them.
Like Bob and?
Yeah, myself and Bob, uh.
Tricav.
Yeah, semi-annually or every two months we meet with them. Um, and we're due, I think, next week to meet with them.
So maybe extend it either thirteen years, which will give them thirty, a thirty-year lease or twenty-three years, which will give them a forty-year lease. So they'll be satisfied that they're not gonna be thrown out of that building.
I agree, I agree.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, anyone else? Okay, thank you. All business four, receive and consider approval of an amendment to Little Compton Agriculture Conservancy Trust Transfer Tax Payment Process. And I did have something written down, here we go. So it's my understanding, the crux of this issue is that the changes that are proposed by the act trust here today can't be implemented or codified in an appendix. Or do the changes need to be made to the enabling legislation? So that's a legal question. Where lawyers have to talk about this and argue their points back and forth. Don't know if we're gonna be able to settle that today. I know that the lawyer, the lawyer's solicitor, uh, Tony DeSisto and the act trust lawyer Corinne Browning is here today, drove from Newport, said it wasn't that bad of a drive. Hope it's just as good going back. Our meeting on ten twenty-nine at eleven AM at undisclosed location to discuss these legal questions that we're pondering today. Do you want anyone in this room to give you advice? Or emails or tell you how these things should go? I'll give a few minutes for that, if they'd like, if that's something you want to engage in tonight.
No, you know, they're, uh, the issues are uh, uh, legal in nature. Uh, I have spoken to Ms. Browning more than once on this, I think there's some things that have to be worked out. Uh, we'd like the opportunity to do that, I will say that Ms. Browning has been um um, as diligent as a foxhound on this one. And um, and we, we just need to sort some things out, we do have some differences, I think that we need to flush out a little bit, so.
The question I've asked many lawyers since I've been in this business is, when are you coming back with some, some answers, folks? How long is it gonna take, Christmas? Before?
Or Thanksgiving?
Before?
Yeah, I've, we, we'd like to do this, I think, before Thanksgiving.
If we can get that codified, that'd be good. So anyone else want to speak on this? I have a hand, go ahead. I'm recognizing you.
Okay. I'm just gonna hand you down, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna.
Thank you.
Want to count?
Oh, sure, thank you.
Okay. So. My name is Larry, this is what it's worth, phone online, who pays a huge attention to the consideration by the attorneys, but I just want to say before I want to thank the members of the Agricultural Conservancy Trust for all of these efforts to clarify and tighten up procedures for the top of the rating collection of the transfer tax which has been the principal source of funding for us operations for almost forty years. Over that time, uh, there has been much discussion and sometimes controversy about the fair ad with less than facts. I'm not gonna get into details here, but I believe that uh, a recent attempt, attempt of recent actions in the last ten years to increase the exemption which work needs to do, so exacerbate some of the issues inherent in what we're trying to solve, so. Uh, this, this is, it's timely to address this and I'm glad that the, the trust maintaining, good independent council has, especially this, you know. My mic, um I'll go back in the general assembly these four times, to be, then, you know, maybe legislation, most of those amendments have sought to balance, like, even if you're some of the law, certain of the tax correction process, uh, we, we still are dealing with ambiguities, but I, I hope I really support the intent of the trust current proposals to revise the transfer tax form and to adopt more substantial rules and regulations concerning the process. Again, I support the intent and the substance of the current proposals, but I do frankly think having read it as it's been presented, uh, this, and I do think frankly that there are still, there is still ambiguity and language in both the uh, form and the appendix. Uh, I believe that most of this, well knowing all the issues, can be resolved, we needed some more time and effort. So I have, I know that there's been a discussion going on, I fill in my two bits for what it's worth, what I found is we organize, we organize the uh, the transfer tax process narrative, we'll see less, we'll take the candle of voice. And then I made a few suggestions about the form, of course it's gonna be important, it's gonna be long and the bottles, in the, in the, in the, parrot, it's consistent. Uh, I would only make one other point about this, I know, one of the reasons and I've followed and have been involved with this for a long time, let's come up again and again, is uh the extent of the town's authority under the enabling law as it's adopted and amended uh, to um, the scope of the rules and right, what you can do under the rules and regulations that were authorized to adopt under section four. They're silent on the question of tax, that section, that if that's for for the trust matters and including doesn't limit it to uh, managing the properties. Uh, the only other trust is comparable to this in the students, the trust created same years, the mid-eighties, some of the legislation is, language, legislation is identical between the two, some of it's quite different. But in looking at it, the um the two sections regarding the adoption of rules and regulations are identical except for requiring three votes, so on a smaller board in Block Island to adopt them, and they cite uh, they have different citations for the open meetings, they're identical in Block Island. I know that um there are other issues about how they collect their tax, but they've adopted quite uh robust enforcement sections of their rules and regulations regarding their tax, so there is some precedent for adopting rules and regulations for enforcement under the very same language um, that we have in our, so, thanks for all your efforts. We can wrap this up, but I think we can take a little more time.
Thank you Larry, I hope the uh, the attorneys took notes. Anyone else on this one? Alright, thank you. All I, I thought I saw somebody, all business five, consider and vote to hire on your radar wallet as interim town administrator contingent upon a suitable contract review through by the solicitor and a successful background check with a start date of November third, twenty twenty-five. Do I have a motion?
Yes, I'll make that motion.
Uh, and I will second it, uh, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Not seeing any, thank you. New business one, letter from Carol A. Wardell, CMC town clerk designating her retirement plans and requesting the council appoint current deputy town clerk, Heather J. Cook, CMC as town clerk, filling the unexpired term of the current town clerk as of January first, twenty twenty-six, to allow a smooth transition. I'd be happy to make that motion.
I'll be happy to second it.
So we're in discussion, I'm gonna say lots of nice things about Carol who's sitting somewhere that she hasn't sat in thirty-six years. So she looks a little different over there, not as close to me, I know that's, you know, that's awful for you not to be close over here.
Can I kick off the?
Go ahead.
We have a full house here and suggest that we give Carol a big round of applause for being amazing.
We're gonna get Carol up here in a minute. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yes.
Oh, thank you.
Congratulations to Heather. New business two, request to discuss options for a potential curb cut Pike's Peak in response to a citizen's request for handicap accessibility. Carol A. Wardell, could you step up to the microphone please, or?
I can use.
The microphone working there, state names and your address.
And I can speak into it.
And, and tell us all about this uh, new business.
All I'm gonna tell you is that it has, the request has been received from a resident to have a curb cut on Pike's Peak. There has already been some discussion with Rhode Island DOT on our options, and so the police chief and myself are working actively on trying to find out what we can do and we'll report back when we have further information.
Just another example of Carol doing things that the clerk doesn't do. So thank you Carol for everything you do, doing, and I know you'll be back asking to do more because you'd be bored.
No.
I bet, I will have a comment.
Lose.
Alright, we don't need a vote on two, new business two, so thank you for the update on that. New business three, consider and vote not to participate in the appeal of town of Barrington at all versus state at all, uh, solicitor.
This is the uh, case uh, that has been commonly referred to as the Evergreens contract case. Uh, some years ago, I believe it was twenty nineteen, the general assembly uh, passed a law that says that when a collective bargaining agreement uh, lapses, but a new collective bargaining agreement uh, for cities and towns hasn't been uh, yet adopted that the terms of the old contract uh, continue on until the new contract takes place. Uh, several city and towns filed suit on that alleging that it violated the contracts clause of the state and federal constitution. Some cities and towns uh, dropped off, the case took a long time, it was finally decided uh, this month. And uh, the defendants in the case, the state of Rhode Island and the unions that were involved were successful in the case. The question now is whether or not this case should be uh, appealed to the Supreme Court. I don't recommend that. Uh, I've seen the uh, estimates of how much the appeal is gonna cost, I know that uh, Little Compton has a very small portion of that. But I just don't think this is, this um, case is going to be successful on an appeal. I recommend that you don't participate in any appeal if it goes forward.
I'll make the motion not to participate in the appeal of town of Barrington at all.
Second.
Any other further discussion on? Ain't none, thank you, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None, thank you. Four, business four, acknowledged donation of efforts by the Saconic Garden Club to pay for work to the garden between the Brownout House and the playground, for a grant secured for the project. Would like to potentially remove the smaller of the two sheds. I'm happy to make a motion to remove both those sheds. I've done some background work on them. They're pressure-treated, they've been there since 1988, and I think it's time for them to go. So I'm going to make a motion to remove both those sheds. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Any other discussion on that?
And just add that the, the pressure-treated structures, we've been counseled are a liability issue and a potential safety hazard, especially the kids playing on around them, so that's, that's where this is coming from. And, and we spoke with Jason Burchard, who's working with the Seconic Garden Club to, to do some excavating over there to, to put in some new soil for them to plant into, and he's going to have a small machine there, and he said it would be easy enough for him to just yank them when he's in there with his small machines. I think that's, that's our, that's our hope.
Further discussion?
So should we give them approval to go forward with this? What's there a question?
Would you like to hear some more about it?
I don't have to hear any more about it. I mean, I've read it, so.
Well, Jason, you can talk to, tell us all about it. It's really a short one. Come on, Jason.
I, I think the question is whether or not the.
I think.
Allow. I think, I think the question is whether or not council action is needed to proceed.
Yeah, I, I think.
I think we need a vote to remove those structures. I think it's on town property.
But he's asking to do other stuff on town property, so I'm just saying, the town council should give him approval to go forward with everything that he's listed in this letter. Okay, so I make the motion to.
I'll retract my motion.
Motion to allow Jason Burchard to take control of this and do whatever's listed in this letter that was sent.
Second.
And with not in that letter, it's a removal of the two structures, right? It's not.
That's, that's.
Of, of the two structures. Correct. I have a motion, I have a second, and give us a, the flowery discussion about this. Go ahead.
It's pretty simple. We're going to be taking out the old soil that they're having a hard time keeping weed out of, and we're going to be bringing in some new stuff, a little bit of light burning in the area a little bit later in the season, and that's about it.
Well, it was short. Thank you. I think it's a little great over there, and I appreciate you taking this endeavor.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jason.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. License commissions, one, petition for a class F1 day retail beverage license for surf and turf dinner, November 8, 2025, Little Compton Game Club located on ADH on that road. Have motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
On paper?
Aye.
Thank you. Communications, received electronic communication from the budget committee with examples of proposed templates for budget submissions. Solicitors, you have a chance to look at that by any?
I have, yes.
And do you have any comment on it?
No.
You have no comment?
I have no comment.
I'll take, I'll take that as good. All right, thank you. On communications, consent? I don't see any. Motion to pay the bills?
What are you doing with the communication? No action.
Sorry, Gary's going to say, put it on file, right, Gary?
No, no, it shouldn't go on file.
What do you want to go with it?
There's a proposal that it be shown to the.
Right.
So I think that's.
Okay, I'm sorry, I missed that. You make a motion?
Make a motion. Go ahead. But you haven't made one tonight.
Go ahead, Bob.
That's never been. I moved that the.
Electronic communication, budget committee examples of proposed templates?
There, I moved that the recommendation of the budget committee in its entirety be briefed fully to the incoming town administrator so that properly, proper ordination can occur.
Perfect, well said. I'll second it. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Consent. Motion to pay bills?
Don't move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Into adjourn?
Don't move.